All right, I hereby call this, uh, call meeting to order. At this time, we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner Moser.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Commissioner Studd.
Here.
Mayor and Board of Commissioners.
Yep.
Just give us a look, see.
You want to say this chair?
Make sure we're good.
Okay.
It's official now. Thanks. Our technician. Okay, this call meeting, uh, is underway at this time. Position for a city administrator is what we're here for. You've got a copy with the, in your packet of the duties. And a ordinance of the city administrator, what it curtails. Does anybody, uh, have any comment? On any of the items that's been placed in the agenda?
I'd like, I'd like to have an opportunity to answer a question that was posed before me at our last meeting, if I could. Question was, was brought to me that, uh, at a Kiwanis Club meeting, I had mentioned that I would never support the position of a city manager. And how would I respond to those people that were in that meeting? And I'm gonna respond like this. Uh, I hold true to that. I would not support the position of city manager or any other subject brought before this board. That would cause us to have to change our home charter. Because I think it's working pretty darned good under our home charter. Therefore, uh, to explain a little bit more. I believe that giving authority to a single person to do as they wish is not healthy in any government. And it would also take the authority of the city board out of this board's hands. And ultimately, out of the voters' hands, which I would not support. But if I have the opportunity to help put this into place to where it makes our board more efficient, timely, effective, then I will always be open to those possibilities. And think that we, as a board, need to be also. So that's how I would answer that question. Thank you.
Let me read to you what came off of the, uh, Google. A city administrator, also known as a city manager or city executive, is an appointed professional responsibility for overseeing the day-to-day operations of a municipality. City administrators typically report directly to the mayor and city council. Few, few questions has been asked. Does, uh, the city administrator that, that we're gonna appoint, Jessica, who, no doubt, she can do the job. Do they have, and this was a question called to me. Will they have any authority over the Sweetwater Utility Board? Okay. All right. Do we need to put that in the duties? Also, about, do they have anything to do with the city school system, since it's in the city? What will their relation be in connection with the school system? Will they have a vote? Will they have, uh, you know, that kinda thing?
It's my understanding, and once again, it's just my understanding, those two, two boards are completely separate from this position. Those boards still act and set policy independently, kinda the way they do right now, of this particular board. That one position of city administrator would not supersede those boards already set in place. That, that's my understanding. I mean, if it's any different, that's what we're kinda here to discuss tonight, is our understanding of this position.
Right.
Uh, so, does anyone know if that understanding is false?
I don't see anywhere in these, this job description.
We, uh, to me, we could be as, we need to be as detailed as possible on a job description to protect the integrity of the city. And make sure that the, the authority is not taken away from the mayor and the Board of Commissioners. But it's, I think everybody here can agree that, from what I've read in the, the ordinance that's been put together, that it's all, it's all what Jessica does already. And, you know, to me, it's making sure that, that's in writing, that it's what is required. And that we, as a city, take steps to make sure that she's compensated for what she does above and beyond the current job description, which is city reporter.
The, to add to what Alan, um, basically stated, there's, there's two things that particularly jump out in my mind, based on what we've been through, through, through the years. And one of, one of them is when the comptroller comes in here and starts inventorying every position. And that position as city recorder has six or seven listings of, of their job description. But the task and the experience and the things being done far exceed that. The comptroller is asking, do you have authorization to do these things? I think this board, it's an unwritten authorization to proceed with these items and these tasks that are being done. But one of the things that's being asked of us is to give written authorization to these tasks. And that would kinda check the box of a state comptroller in making sure that the tasks that are being done by this individual are truly, in, in fact, backed up by, by the board. Also, if I look at the job description as our, you know, going, going back to our charter, if I look at the jo- job description that's, that's in our, uh, charter right now, it, where is it? It limits, it, it greatly limits the task and activities that I know for a fact is being performed by, by Jessica. And I think everyone in this room knows that Jessica was born here, she's raised here, and she wants the absolute best for this city. And that's why she and the whole staff at, at City Hall goes to the limits that they go to. And I think it's raised the bar of this city because of some of the things that they have taken on. But in summary, what I'm trying to say is, one way or the other, we, we, as a board, need to fix that in giving written authorization to perform these tasks or to take these tasks away from this individual. And personally, I would rather give written authorization than to take these tasks away. So that's, that's one of the reasons, just looking at it in black and white, and some of the things that, that I'm seeing is making all of these tasks align with the job description. I'm gonna say this in a statement and phrase as a question. If we pass this today or tomorrow, whenever, you know, we, we come to that vote, this board still has ultimate authority on that position. And we can, we can fire that individual, or we can vote to do away with this position at any point in time. The, the control of that position still sits with this board. John, is that, is that accurate? Or is that?
Yes, it's within, within the context of what you're saying, yes.
Okay.
You couldn't do away with the position of recorder.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm talking about city, city administrator. If.
I'm not sure how to talk about this without, without it remaining clear and not getting muddled as you go from one sentence to the next, to another paragraph, to another idea. But we're simply giving another title, or perhaps you might even say a subtitle, to recorder. Jessica is still, under our charter, Jessica will still be recorder. But the name we are going to refer to that position by is city administrator. And the charter, under the charter and our ordinance, the way we have it now, she's not really much of anything more than the secretary of these meetings and the treasurer. And that's it. All of the organization, of all of the grants that are administered and written and applied for, and the staff operation that, that creates all of these wonderful events that we have in town, and all of that, there's no authority in the charter or in the, uh, ordinance for her to do that. And so, like you were saying, all the things that she already does, we're describing. And making clear by ordinance that, that under the charter, that's part of all financial affairs and clerical duties. But literally, that's way beyond financial affairs and clerical duties. Uh, so, yeah, you, you can do anything you want to, as far as changing the descriptions of any of these. And, and this, the, the best way to proceed would be to start either with all of this, or part of this, or whatever you want to do with this. And if there's problems, if the position needs to grow even further, or if you want to cut back in some areas, then you could do any of that at any time.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so can I have some clarification?
Talk to him, he wouldn't hear you, honey.
Okay. All right, so you're saying this is just gonna be going kind of under the city recorder? If I remember Jessica's email correctly, she felt that Sonia was doing the work of a city recorder, and so this would be a new position. But you're saying this is not gonna be a new position, Sonia will not be the city recorder, and we're keeping Jessica in both positions?
What I'm saying is, is that Jessica will still maintain the overall responsibility for all of the city's operations, answering to the mayor and the Board of Commissioners. And under your authority. She, it doesn't give her any authority to do anything that all of you haven't already approved. But the charter itself, or ma- I don't, the charter and, and the ordinance now, make it clear that duties like keeping the minutes of the meetings, and also for just the, the bookkeeping, can be delegated to another person. Right now, I guess we would, we'd call you deputy clerks or deputy recorder. We're just gonna start using those words, recorder, because it describes the bookkeeping part, and Sonia does that. And clerk, which, who, to refer to, uh, keeping minutes of meetings and such, which is a clerk's job. And we're gonna start using those words, all, for all three of those positions to more closely reflect what the person's job duties actually are.
And what that individual is specific, specifically doing.
Yes, and qualified to do. To make sure that we keep up with the state training requirements for Sonia and for, for each member of the, of the staff.
And, and this is not just for Jessica. This is if Jessica leaves, this is the criteria that we use to hire somebody else to come in for the city. Because we need this, in my opinion. I mean.
If you're gonna replace her, you're gonna have to do away with two-thirds of all these qualifications in order to find somebody.
Well, you set the bar high.
It sets the bar high, which is a good thing.
But, you know, that's, that's what, to me, that's what this city deserves. They deserve the bar to be set high. And for us, and whoever works here to, uh, give them the best that we possibly can, which I think our, our employees did a pretty darned good job of that. But this is a criteria that we're setting, not just for right now.
Right.
We're setting it for when, you know, we're over here pushing up daisies and the next group comes to sitting at the city board. So, you know, I, I really want us to, to take that into consideration and be very thoughtful of what we put in the job description of the, the requirements, uh, and reading through. Uh, I've noticed, just, you know, that may help comfort some other people. Everywhere I read, it says either, uh, as directed by the board, or, uh, uh, there's several things that I've read that, you know, prepares the agenda for governing board meetings. You know, the, the employee will carry out certain job duties under the, uh, under the authority of the board and the, the mayor and the Board of Commissioners. There's nowhere in here that I have read that gives this position ultimate authority over anybody. Yeah, it's, it's all under the authority of the mayor and the Board of Commissioners, as we've already voted and approved. It's to carry it out, and I think it's gonna be more efficient and effective for the city.
But she, I have, I have worked in Loudon, and I've seen what Athens does. Only thing I hate about this is that she has authority over your people. Yes, she does.
There was some, there was something in here that also stated, and on a, on an HR level, um, rather than a full city board serving as the administrator of hirings and terminations, city administrator with affected department head and the commissioner would have the fire, the hire, the, the authority, excuse me, to hire and terminate positions. So instead of this whole board having to collectively come together and determine, I'm gonna pick on John. If John had a employee that he was having an issue with, we would sit down with the city administrator, John, and Alan, instead of coming before the whole board in a public, um, scenario. That's, that's my understanding. So in this statement, the city administrator alone would not have authority over John or Alan's employee without their involvement.
Is that the way?
Without one little part unanimously.
Yeah, unanimously.
Unanimous, yeah.
Okay.
If it's not unanimous, then it comes before the board.
Thank you.
All three of those people don't all agree.
Right.
Yes.
It comes to the board. So there's no, there's no individual authority.
So there's, there's two tiers.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what I was trying to get to. That individual could not act solely alone. See, it's actually two layers, do you? Thank you, John.
And I, I'm thinking maybe all of you all are aware that even just recently, we've had a situation with one or more employees where their conduct potentially causes a, a high risk to safety. And we've got a commissioner who can suspend for a few days, very short, you know, really about all, uh, about all that a department head can do is just send them home for the day. And then you gotta get the commissioner involved, and, and then we end up, they can be suspended pending an investigation. And then the whole thing has to be brought before the entire, the mayor and the board. And it's not unusual, I mean, it's, it's probably un, is unusual, but it's not unheard of that we've got an employee then who is a risk to the city in terms of liability, and maybe also to the safety of the public, that we, the city has no way of moving expeditiously. And if it truly is a situation like that, then the commissioner and the city administrator and the department head are all, are all three going to agree? If they don't, then probably it's a good idea to have more investigation and bring it before all of you. But, uh, without this change, there's not any way for, for those decisions to be made quickly. And I don't know which one of you's, I've never heard any one of you all inter, seek to interfere in another commissioner's decision about your own people, anyway.
No. Uh, let's go back to what Joey and, so I'm clear on this and what y'all said. So Jessa, Jessica's still gonna take, have the role as city recorder. Sonia assistant. So that don't change. She'll still, the budget and all that, it's just more or less what's explained in here is what's gonna take place. Okay. Uh, have we talked to Jessica about, is she gonna get an increase in salary on this? Uh, have we talked to her about, anybody talked to her about it?
I haven't, but I think that it's, it's necessary. And let me, let me just kinda back up to something that, that, um, we just discussed as well. I think, you know, we need to make sure this is detailed as well, you know, as far as day-to-day operations of each department. And I, and I'll, I'll pick on John, too. John does, and I'm not saying this is happening, but it needs to, you know, if we do have somebody in the future besides Jessica's this, I think we need to be detailed and say, you know, nobody needs to be telling John how to run the fire department every day. You know, you don't need to tell him, to, yeah, you need to inspect your trucks and things like that. If I have a problem with that, then I, as his commissioner, I'm gonna take care of that. Then if we need to go further, we go further and bring it before the board. But, you know, day-to-day things, um, we've got department heads in place right now that can handle their stuff. But I think we need to make sure that we are very detailed in this job description and ordinance, John, to make sure that for future people that may be in this position, you know, we kinda have the understanding with Jessica, but if anybody else that comes in, it needs to be there so we don't have to have this meeting again on Tuesday night to change it. That's my opinion. But day-to-day needs to, it needs to be detailed that department head and the commissioner can, are still responsible for the daily operations of their, each individual department.
I think we're all in agreement, we wanna do what's the best for Sweetwater. And, uh, in order to move forward and maintain the progress we're seeing now, then we may have to do something different. And this may be what we need to do.
Do we want to, uh, vote on this tonight or wait till Monday at the regular city council meeting?
I think we need to go ahead and do it tonight.
Do you have, I was about to say Jim.
I think we need to, uh, first off, maybe I'm seeing more than I need to, but I think we need to, um, I think where conflicts are gonna come in.
I could, will you talk a little louder?
Yeah. I think where conflicts are gonna come in is from a situation where if you look at our charter, uh, and one reason we're in this situation, it says that this board, uh, exercises both the executive and the legislative duties of the city. Okay? So what you're talking about doing is ceding some of that executive authority to an individual. So we've gotta decide for one thing, how far does that go? Most city administrators, if, if you'll look at other places that have a person with that title, they are entitled to hire and fire, including department heads. So, you know, if, if we're not gonna go to that extent, we need to decide where that line's going to be. Uh, and, you know, with this, uh, tribunal that's gonna decide hiring and firing, what if the person being discussed is the department head?
I think it also says in there that.
I bet you won't get a unanimous decision, then.
Hmm, no, it won't be.
I think I read.
Which means we're gonna be back here having a hearing about.
I read somewhere that is.
Or not even a hearing, they're an at-will employee.
If it was a department head, it would come back towards the.
Uh, you know, so.
But it would still be your decision, the whole board.
Yes.
That's my point I was, I was making a few minutes ago. I have seen both in Athens and Loudon, too, they go through. Now, this city managers we're talking about, which relative to the same, city administrator, city manager, they don't last long. One administration will come in and they'll get rid of the administrator or city manager. Then another one will come in and they get commissioners mad at them, is really because they exceed their authority. I think that's where you're coming from, to the fact that.
Well, just that it's, you know, I would not be in favor of voting on it tonight, because I think we need to gather and make sure we're all comfortable. Where are we drawing these lines? For instance, if you read through our ordinances where they are now, we have a personnel commissioner who has extensive duties. If those are now gonna become part, the responsibility of this administrator or recorder, or whatever we're gonna call him, then, you know, what are we gonna take out of that personnel ordinance and give to this person? And what are we gonna leave for that personnel commissioner to do? Somebody mentioned the budget. Our charter says that the mayor proposes both the capital improvement program and the budget. Uh, now, I know how that gets done now, and it could still be done that same way then, but I don't think we can put it in ordinance that the city administrator prepares the or, the budget and the capital program, because that directly conflicts with what our charter says is responsibility of the mayor's office. And, you know, we've had mayors who have done that, uh, you know, and, uh, formulated the budget. Because that, and for the mayor's office, that's about the only opportunity the mayor has to have a say in, here's where I think our money ought to go, and here's what I think our priorities ought to be, is in presenting that original budget. And then you let the commission work out what passes and what doesn't. So, you know, I just think we need to be careful, um, and, you know, there's even, hearing what everybody's. We need to let everybody involved know what the parameters are. Uh, and, you know, as far as, um, personnel, I guess, you know, if we're gonna retain the system or that executive authority in each commissioner, then, you know, that takes out a pretty big chunk of what most city administrators do. A big chunk. If you look at other places that operate that way. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's my concern, is I don't, and, and we can do this whenever we want to, because every two years, we're supposed to pass an ordinance to organize the city. Ordinance to organize the city. Uh, we've changed it around before. Um. When I first came on as a commissioner, we were dealing with a situation. So, we reorganized some things, put some departments together. And tried to deal with what we needed to at that time. So, you know, I don't think this is anything. That needs to be too complicated, but it needs to be clear to everybody or else we're gonna create conflicts where, you know. Our city administrator thinks they can do one thing, so they try to do it with the police chief and he comes and complains to me and I'm trying to find two people that'll agree with me and I don't like that. And boom, we don't have one anymore. And the mayor is right, you know, they've had an all, how long have they been without one now, mayor up in Loudon, over a year, isn't it? Cause they can't get enough people to agree on what it ought to be and who it ought to be. So, they've just got an interim that's kinda day to day poking along. And that, that's my big concern is, is, you know, I think we need to be careful and we need to be very clear. On who's responsible for what. And, you know, we have, uh, I mean, there's all kinds of different places that do this. One of them, interestingly, I found back in. Some old M T A S stuff is they simply expanded the job description of the city recorder's office. Uh, so that you're in compliance with your charter because we've got a recorder. But it talks about such things as, uh, you know, helping the mayor and board of aldermen prepare the budget. Responsible for operation success of finance department. Uh, monitors performance of departments, but you know, not day to day operations. So that, you know, somebody looked and said, hey, we're. Only clearing twenty percent of cases over in the police department, you know, I mean, that may be a function of that. But, you know, so that may be an alternative we wanna look at. I just think we need to take time to do this right. If it's something we're gonna do and we probably do because we have a lot of things, you know, I mean, right now. As we sit here tonight, who's responsible for uh moving the community center project alone? Who's responsible for the Biggs house? Um, you know, who stays in touch with the utility board and the library board? Now, we have members of that and the school board. Which can come back and report if there are problems or difficulties, but you know, there are things. That need taken care of that nobody appears to have responsibility for and I think that's the complaint Jessica gets is. From the, from the auditors and the controllers offices. Because a recorder historically has essentially been, as somebody said, the secretary and the bookkeeper. Now, in some places, they used to also be the city judge and they held city court. Uh, so that's changed mostly now, but you know, that historically, they were the finance officer for the city. Um. And certainly ours has grown beyond that and we do need to make clear what the authority of that position is gonna be. Um, to protect them and the city. But, you know, there's just a lot of different ways of dealing with this. And you know, whatever name we wind up giving it, uh, I think we still have to have a recorder because our charter says we have a recorder. Now, whether that's a subordinate position in this city administrator's position, which some places do. Some places have a city administrator and recorder and the same person's both. So, you know. I mean, there's a lot of ways to do it, but we need to be careful doing it. Um, and make sure we get it right the first time. And but part of that discussion is gonna have to be, you know, what authority of this board. Uh, are we going to cede this position? And in doing that, what changes do we maybe need to make in other parts of our ordinances like the personnel ordinance? Uh. Cause if they're gonna have any authority in that area, then we're taking it away from that commissioner and that needs to be clear. Uh, you know, who, who's to do what in those instances, I think.
Thank you, Jim. Any other comments?
Are there certain parameters that have to be listed? In the job title of a city administrator or can it be done however we choose?
I think it can be done however we choose because we're a home rule government. There is a specific statute. For city administrator form of government, which is board, is mayor and board of alderman. And. Uh, m- majority of the duties that are listed here came straight out of that statute. That's one of the reasons I was, I was particular in putting in here that. Nothing, basically that, nothing in here that resembles some other form of government. Uh, rejects that our, our home rule status. Cause that's, wants something we need to be very careful not to ever do. And also said that if there's anything like that in here that could have that effect, then, you know, X it out and keep the rest of it.
Uh, cause I, I don't think, I don't think we even need to push the limits of our home rule government.
No, no, and we're not.
We need to be detailed enough to make sure that that's not happening.
And like Jim said, that there are different. Different forms of government have different titles for di, and in fact, the statute for mayor and board of alderman. Talks about having a city administrator and a recorder. And so. A lot of it is, all of the same duties are always going, all of the same responsibilities are going to exist in every government. And whose duty it is to see that those get done and what you call the people in those positions. Is really what differs and that's what Jim's talking about. We need to make sure that it's clear. What those are, what those responsibilities are, who has the duty to see about them, particularly like with personnel. When I threw this together and I say threw it together, I did not, didn't have time to. Make a comprehensive review of all of our entire, all of our ordinances.
Sure.
And I don't think it's necessary that there be a complete comprehensive word for word review, but there, there needs to be. A review of all of it. I tried to take care of that by generally saying that where the word recorder is used throughout. That it's amended to mean city administrator within the meaning of this ordinance. But. For instance, I didn't think about how it might. There might be some conflict in the personnel that didn't involve the recorder, the title recorder.
I think, go ahead.
Maybe that needs to be a, a four-headed monster then, include the personnel commissioner in that if isn't, if it's not his department and it still needs to be unanimous. I, I don't, I'm, I'm throwing darts, so.
Well, I think. Specifically, two, two things. I gotta circle back around and give you kudos. We're not talking about Jessica. We're talking about Jessica because she proposed this, but what we're talking about is a position. That takes us into the next governmental phase of the twenty second century. And what that specifically looks like based on what, what Jim is saying. I think, I think it's a position and a title that is absolutely needed based on where we are today, period. But there's more back checking paperwork, ordinance charter that needs to be done so that we get. This position right. Um. And I think this board and, and one of the reasons why. We've been successful is discussion like this and. I think we can get to an agreement where mayor, you know, you're, you're concerned that the board loo, loses power. Or someone has totali, totalitarian, you know, rule. We don't want that either. And then just making sure that our charter aligns with the position. So. Can that be done in two weeks? Can it be done in two, two months? I don't know if any of us truly know that, but I think. I mean, I would, I would definitely vote for moving this forward, whatever that looks like, um, based on. Chargers or, or ordinances.
Yeah, can we, can we do that part in two steps? Can we vote saying, yes, we're gonna form this position, but hold off on the. Job description so that we can take the time that we need to without having this in limbo land? Vote saying, yes, we're gonna form it, but hold off on the description until, cause two weeks to two months.
Yeah.
We might need that time to, to make sure it actually is what we want, but we also don't want. Jessica to be waiting forever to just know if we are gonna make this move or not. I don't think we wanna wait two, two months. To know if we're making this move or not. Are we able to make that voting a two-part?
Did Jim probably have a better opinion, more informed opinion because he's been at this longer, but. You know, I think if you, if you do that, I don't think it will be saying anything more than we're gonna call the recorder city, city administrator. That's. To go any further than that, then you're going to be adopting. Some authority, some job description, something and then not all of it. It, uh, and. You know, I don't know that. I don't know that an ordinance says we're gonna start calling the recorder city administrator would satisfy any state agencies or. Or anything like that.
That would also go against our home charter because then you've taken the recorder part out.
Well, no, we're just, we're just, all we're saying is we're just gonna start calling her that. She's still a recorder, but we're gonna start calling her that. And I think that if you tried to bifurcate it the way you're saying, that that's really all you'd end up doing and I think that'd be ineffectual.
Well, uh, uh, from comments everybody's had, our discussion so far. Maybe we can set some contours if nothing else. I'm taking that everybody does not want to alter the present organization where a commissioner is in charge of each department.
Right.
Is that true?
True.
Sure.
Everybody?
It'll, yeah.
Alright, and we certainly don't wanna pass anything in an ordinance that's gonna be a conflict with provision in our charter.
Correct.
Alright. And then we do want to conform any other changes in ordinances we need to make, like the personnel part. Uh, which we do not want. This person's authority to extend solely to hiring and firing.
Correct.
Alright, if that's, if there's some sort of commissioner has to agree involved, whatever, but. This individual is not gonna have that sole authority. Okay. Um.
Okay.
I think there's a, another statement coming. Jim, your.
Well, I'm just trying to thank you. What I'm trying to do is maybe. Everybody have an understanding of what we want this position to be and what we don't want it to be. Um, and then from there, maybe John can. Do a little more word, wordsmithing and, and figure out, uh.
Well, Jessica will be back next week. Uh, and, and we'll all have a chance to talk to her and, and let her pretty well. Make sure she understands what we're doing. Uh, I think one statement was made, uh. She does basically what is called for anyway. I mean, she, you know, she does an excellent job. Uh, she's probably listening, so don't tell her I said that. Uh, but, uh, you know, just, uh. I think common sense approach here with everybody on the same page, as you've said, Jim. Means a lot, not only now, but down the road, the future. Uh, we've got election coming up next year, you know, we got the mayors coming up and, uh, two, two commissioners. And it's important to make sure that they fit in and understand what their role is. As a commissioner and department head. So, do we need to vote to table this? This will give us a, uh.
I, I would move to table it with the request, city attorney maybe could. Rework the proposed ordinance along the lines to make clear. You know, what's in, gonna be included and what's not part of the city administrator's position.
Got that. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose likewise, a motion does carry. Thank you very much for being here. I think it's been a good meeting, a productive meeting. And we'll see you Monday night. We're adjourned. Thank you.